For May 24th. And I will start with my Zoom script. This meeting is being conducted utilizing teleconferencing and electronic means consistent with state of California executive orders regarding the COVID-19 pandemic. Zoom is being utilized for this meeting. In case of technical issues, meetings will be uploaded to the city website as soon as possible after this meeting. We will be conducting today's meeting in a virtual setting using Zoom. Planning commissioners and staff are participating from remote locations practicing appropriate social distancing. Members of the public may view and listen to the meeting by use of Zoom as noted on the city's website and as noted on the agenda. Members of the public wishing to speak to the planning commission may do so during public comment or may comment on agenda items during the discussion of each item. And must be logged into Zoom. Anyone using abusive vulgar offensive threatening or harassing language, personal attacks of any kind or offensive terms that target specific individuals or groups will be muted and removed from the meeting. Please do not abuse this new way to provide public comment. Okay, can we have a roll call for attendance, please?
Sure, we'll start with Chair Fritz.
Here.
Vice Chair Ottinger.
Here.
Commissioner Burns.
Here.
Commissioner Fernandez.
Here.
Commissioner Kelly.
Here.
And Commissioner Douche is absent. Should say soon to retire Commissioner Douche.
Seeing as we don't have any members of the public present, I don't know that we need to have a public comment at this point. You've received any written public comment, Carrie?
Not for the commission.
So then moving on to conflicts of interest, I wouldn't imagine that's a conflict of interest. Kathy, did you have something? You're muted.
My public comment as a citizen is to say that my heart is broken today and I'll try to maintain myself here at the meeting tonight.
Okay, so we have a few regular agenda items. The first one up is the review of the planning commission ordinance adopted by the city council.
Sure, and I'll just give a very brief staff report, obviously, try to keep you up to date with the actions as it's gone through the process. And did just want to get the final the final ordinance to you so you could read that. It does go into effect middle of next month, thirty days for an ordinance after the second the second reading and adoption is when general ordinance is going to affect. And so I think, you know, the fact that yourself, Chair Fritz and Commissioner Fernandez wanted to look at the rules for the planning commission, it's very timely since we have some other changes that need would need to be done anyway as part of that. So I believe you'll have that on your next agenda. But if there are any questions about the ordinance, why the council did anything the way they did, I'm happy to answer.
Does anyone have any questions about the ordinance?
So it's all basically just for information for us that this is how it's going to be.
Correct, just so that you're aware, we will be going down to five members, the five that are in this room right now, actually, since Commissioner Douche is trying to retire as I noted. So he will be able to step down. I will let you know, we do plan on doing a certificate of appreciation for all of his hard years in service to the city. I will let you excuse me, know when that is. And those are usually at the very beginning presentations of the council meeting, so they're easier for folks to wish to come and congratulate to join. The other, so in reducing to five, we did change the language a little bit to note, just note that at any time, a majority of the commissioners need to be inside city limit residents. But it does allow for the one out of town resident and a business owner, which obviously would be a business owner who was out of town. Those would still need to live within those, the three school districts, so rather than the nine, five, four, seven, two zip code area. It has been reduced to the three school districts that serve the city of Sebastopol. And I did check in both of our all of our business owners are within that geography and are obviously Vice Chair Ottinger is our out of city resident, but she is well within that. She's so close to the city. Other side of a street kind of situation. So that would not be an issue for any of our current commissioners.
Okay, actually, do you have a question? So I know that it kind of alludes to the commission here regarding parks, but it doesn't officially like establish the commission as a park commission. Is that just the way that it was set up and that's just, you know, we
That's the way it was set up and there's actually another section of the code of that same chapter, chapter two, that talks about the park commission being disbanded disbanded when it was disbanded. And that role being assigned to the planning commission. So we already have that formalized within that.
Okay.
And that was sort of a late, late change. You would have taken another, another round of noticing and everything. So so but it codified and I think, yeah, maybe that's something where we look at putting that in the website description of the planning commission's roles, I think might already be, but I can certainly check that. And then maybe also on the rules as well.
Yeah, because I was just thinking that if it's, if it's just part of our, it rolls into part of our responsibility duties, that's fine. If we're all supposed to be part commission, I'm just wondering, are we supposed to formally like, you know, stop the commission meeting and start that one. But if it's just our duties, I think.
Let's just keep it as duties as assigned, the way it reads in the code. That's
Okay.
In terms of doing agendas, that means I would have to do separate agendas.
Right, no, 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 we do that. I'm just, I'm just, okay, I'm just clarifying.
Anyone else have a question about this? I did actually have a question. That's just, just like a I just wasn't sure what this meant. So on the it's in section two, twenty-four, twenty E. It reads, "In the event new commissioners are appointed by reason of any increase in the number of the commission, they shall serve for such a period of time as to provide for as close to equal a number of commissioners being selected each year as possible." I kind of have no idea what that means.
You know, I think, so I think that's related to I don't think that's valid anymore, Chair Fritz.
Okay.
Because the, the ordinance used to say between five and seven numbers. And so in the case they changed that, that's where they had that kind of instructional measure. And I, I did miss that when I was redoing the ordinance to simplify that.
Okay, yeah.
I just missed it. And yeah.
I just, I was sick. I was reading and like, I, I don't know what this means.
If the, if the council wanted to by resolution appoint more members, then they need to do that.
Got it.
But they no longer have that in their, the number of members language. It simply says, planning commission is five members.
Got it. All right, no one else, there are no more questions on this. And I guess we can move on to the next item, which is our work plan.
It looks like Kathy might have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Kathy.
Well, unmute myself first. I, yeah, I would just like to say that I was supportive of having seven people on the planning commission. Because I think it's good that more people in the community understand what it is that we do and how we shaped our future to accomplish the goals that we set forward. And if it, the planning commission is also a really good place to get your feet wet before you run for city council. And I'm sorry that more people don't have that opportunity to do that now.
And Vice Chair Ottinger, that was pretty much in line with what council member Greeney spoke to. She was a long vote against the ordinance, but the others in general really wanted to respect the commission as a whole's request and recognize it to try it at five. Knowing that, you know, if another morning, we can always go back to something else. But to take the, respect the planning commissioner's longstanding recommendation and also recognize with two current vacancies. Now was a, because that was the prior discussions of doing it through attrition. So you weren't kicking anyone off. But it was a good time to, to make that move.
Yeah, I fully understand that. I'm just sorry that more people aren't interested in their local governance.
Anyone else? Okay, now let's move on to the work plan item.
Rick, do you have a question or a comment on the item that was just discussed? Or are you raising your hand for the work plan item?
Neither. I sadly arrived late, but I, I just have a question of the commission whenever it's appropriate.
There's no objection from the other commissioners. I can open public comment for, for this. So yeah, go ahead, Rick. Make your public comment.
Thank you, Paul. I am wondering if any of the commissioners have any experience with the work of Christopher Alexander.
So Rick, the way the public comment works is that you have, if you have any additional comments, we do all of your comment at once and then typically the commission cannot respond to something that is of substance that might come before the commission. I think in this case, they probably could if they wished to. But if you do have other things you wanted to say at this time, because it's not dialogue, please go ahead.
Yes, no, I, I don't want to bother you guys. I really appreciate what you're doing. It's very important to me and to the whole community. And I, I thank you all for your work and your, your gift. Yeah, thanks a lot. I won't bother you again.
Thanks, Rick. And I'll just respond for myself. I, I'm familiar with Christopher Alexander. I'm an architect and I was actually, got my masters at Berkeley when he was a professor there and you know, I do like his approach and, you know, read some of his books and things. So yeah, I do have a little experience in Carrie.
I can say ditto to that, Paul, except it wasn't Christopher Alexander. It was one of his students that I took a course from, so.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Sure. Thanks for making a comment, Rick. So we can move on to the work plan. And this is an update based on our last comments, I assume.
Correct. And I did get them. So the minutes are unfortunately weren't ready. They are now, but it was after the posting time. So I did make sure I went through them to make sure I didn't miss anything. And I didn't actually miss a couple of things that I think need to be included in this. And so I'd like to just there's, I believe it's just the master plan revision, I've sparked master plan revisions. Which are, are actually included as item six. And then the sorry, moving up the in the parking fee and downtown improvement plan. That was a comment from Chair Fritz. And where in this order that should go, I think would be better to have as part of the discussion tonight. So I was, just as a brief overview, this is in general, yes, I took out everything that is done so that it's the clean version. I still have underlined in here the things that are new from last, from the new us of this update. So vacation rental ordinance has more detail. The housing element update is, I'm sorry. Let me share my screen so we can only looking at the same thing. The housing element update has been added. It's item free, but it's obviously in process now. State legislative requirements, SB nine, regulations are the biggest item that we need to have regulations for. And I'm actually working with the consultant who we did receive the response from for the objective design standards to see if we can include that. Work for that as well. And we don't know what other updates the the, we haven't had to do anything for sidewalk boundary regulations. We just adopted state code and that seems to be looking just fine. But we don't know what is going to happen with this year's legislation. There are still a large number of housing bills. And a couple that would certainly require changes from the city. I have added in the electronic permitting that we're currently working on. And then per our last discussion, the Ives Park master plan is there as well as I've added in the Creek ordinance update. Again, I wasn't sure where where in the prioritization folks were wanting that. And then I did add a couple of things from the requests that were received and I will just so there weren't any new ones. The others were updating, as I noted from Chair Fritz, the parking regulations. And the downtown improvement plan to potentially rise to the top or be higher, higher priorities than they are now. And so I'm happy to answer any questions from the commission.
Anybody have any questions or comments about Carrie's question? Debbie?
I just have a, a question. Are, are we the ones who get to decide what is the priority for the planning commission? Or does that go through the council?
So there's the, just so you're all aware, the planning commission work plan is not an official city required document. It's something that I find very useful in terms of knowing what you guys all have different perspectives of the community. And I have perspectives of what people need through the planning department, planning department realm, but I might be missing things, you know, like Chair Fritz, the comment about some of the small downtown law, it's not being able to add mixed use because of the parking issue. And is there a way we can resolve that without it being a variance every time? Because that certainly stops potential developers from looking at things. So it is something that we work on together. There are certainly things that are required and those have already, or that are mandates or directions from council, like the vacation rental ordinance. And so they're all kind of combined here. What we have done in the past is have this group look at it. Get it to where you want it in terms of priorities. And then we present it to council. And council, the last time they, they thought it was great, they did give a couple of inputs about things they didn't feel was a prior, you know, should be moved up or down on the priority list. And then they also voted to approve it, even though that's not necessarily required. I think it's helpful for understanding and making sure that they're, we're on the same page with what council wants us to be working on.
Thank you.
Kathy?
Yes, when I read the paper the other day and saw that Roundtable, that, sorry, that Mary's Pizza was closing the Sebastopol store, I immediately began to think of how that might impact the planning department's position to be proactive in a case that might create something that we really need and want on that site. And I don't know how a plan like this leaves a lot of room for taking on another action like that. It is, if something positive in that area came up.
Yeah, so further further down on this, and it's not property specific, but I'll, I'll get to it first, let me turn my screen so I'm not making it run dizzy. Here we go. So, and this is down on, you know, the bottom of page five, and I apologize, I've not updated that. The specific plan that's shown here for the Northern Gateway District. So in our general plan, that's the North Gravestine Avenue area, you know, basically. I can pull up a map, but it's, you know, north of Covert Lane. So the Fiesta Market area north. And so what that would do is it would actually you know, and that, it is just by definition, working on improving, you know, that gateway to the city, which is basically that northern commercial area. And identifying the appropriate commercial office industrial mixed use development. So it is basically looking at what, a bit more closely there. Of course, we do have a couple of other potentially pending projects in that area as well, so.
Is it possible to move that up closer to A than C?
Uh, yeah, I think we can certainly, I mean, this, the, the ABC over on the side is actually what the general plan assigned to it. But that doesn't mean that we necessarily have to, you know, most of the A priorities, which were the housing element components and the rezoning that was done. And so some of the other regulations have already been updated. So we are kind of in the area of, I think, most of these, in fact, if you look at the report, are B or C. You know, what we're working on right now are the, the higher ones. So yeah, we're about to start entering where we're looking at the Bs and Cs. And so I you know, if there's something in a timely manner, I absolutely think that that could be, and I've already heard from at least one council member who, who was looking and kind of saying, well, you know, is there something we can do about moving this forward? So.
Yeah, thank you. I'd appreciate moving it forward if we could.
Highlight. And I guess we can talk about where in the position in your deliberations after questions. So I'll just highlight it for now.
And Kathy, I'll just throw out there, because I work with the developer who owns that shopping center. You know, they had wanted to do housing kind of at that, that northern end of the shopping center. And even when Mary's there, they were going to relocate Mary's to the kind of southern part of the shopping center. But CBS has been an unwilling participant in that. And they owned that empty place where they used to be. It's a whole separate parcel that they own. So unfortunately, you know, part of, and I don't know how we do this as a city, but kind of dealing with that shopping center is figuring out how to deal with CBS and getting them to participate and whatever happens there.
Yeah, we, we want to give them some signals that they like, I guess.
Yeah, I don't know.
And it, it can be difficult if, and that's, I think I've told this to Paul before, that is one of the issues I have with specific plans is they, they do require sort of full participation of the property owners in order for them to really kind of work as well as balance with what the, the community is, is visioning as. And that is a hard knock to crack.
Anything else, Kathy?
No, that was it. Thank you.
Debbie?
I'm just curious, when you said the CVS that they were gonna, are you talking about where CVS is now?
No, their old place that's, that's next to Mary's, that shopping center.
Own, they own that building?
They own that building where CVS used to be. It's a whole separate parcel and
And it's really odd because the parcel, the overall parcel with the parking is not owned by none. So technically, they have a building with no parking.
Yeah.
I mean, I know there's a mix, there, there is a, because we just, John had just researched this for the the Starbucks conditional use, there is a shared parking kind of, you know, structure to that situation.
Yeah.
It's, it's a very ownership structure.
Just to clarify, I'm confused. CVS owns the building?
CVS only owns the, where they used to be. It's a separate parcel and a separate building.
Handle it. Why did they move then? I don't even you're kidding me. Always they lost their lease or I don't know what. And so Mary's Pizza is leaving Sebastopol as well, right? So is that right? Mary's and Roundtable are both leaving?
No, not Roundtable. I'm sorry. I misspoke. It's Mary's.
Oh, okay, okay. Oh, that's why I'm so confused because you said Roundtable. I thought you were talking about that. Okay, I'm all in line now. I got it.
Yeah, my bad.
Got it, got it, got it. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Ever?
Okay, yeah, thank you for that. I think we shouldn't lose sight of that. I know this is just for questions, but can we perhaps add that property specifically or that area specifically just to have it on our list and might mean that we, you know, maybe we get a citizens committee together to approach them or, you know, we got to figure it out, but I'd rather have it on the list, even if it's low priority, so we don't forget about it. Just wonder if we can do that. And regarding the, when you talk about the parks, grant identification application, park master planning and implementation, I'm assuming that that's meant for Ives Park, right? It's not Parks Master Planning, it's Park.
Yeah, there are two. So the six Bs, this is actually in response to one of the general plan actions is to develop an adopted parks and recreation master plan, and that's for the whole city.
Okay.
But the, obviously, we know there's a, I was plan, I was park master plan. This was not, the, the six or six A, maybe I should call it, was, was not included anywhere in the general plan. But given where we are in the work phases, it's clear that this does, you know, this is a higher priority than the city, a citywide master plan to, to make sure we get this resolved and move forward to implementation. And I've been talking to a lot of and Riley and, and a couple of folks that she works with about some potential grants and to, for the creek restoration. So that's where, you know, we, we do need to resolve the, the master plan updates brought about by this visioning process we've done with, with you and the community. So that we can settle that because of the physical need to get it settled so we can build it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wonder if it, do we need anything a little bit more specific? Like, do, do we need to have an item in there to assess our, our parks? You know, how big they are, where they're at. Issues, any maintenance issues or any kind of development problems or anything like that? Is that something that maybe on the annual basis, we should take a look at or at least develop a a list so we can have that information? And then on here when I thought I saw something about annual reports. Is that?
I'm not going to add that to the Ives Park plan because I think that's well under control, but I am what I'm, what I think I hear you saying. Correct me if this is not what you intended. That, so it's less needs at parks on an annual basis in the interim. So that's a now action as opposed to a long, an official park master plan to determine maintenance of the other needs for perk improvements. So it might not just be maintenance, there might be you know, like the Libby Park super playground replacement that we did. That is sort of maintenance, but it's kind of just a big park improvement too. It's considered a capital improvement.
Yeah, I was thinking maybe something like assess like our review park statuses in order to assess needs, you know, so in other words, kind of review what we have and then maintenance might come up, needs might come up. But I mean, it's pretty much saying the same thing. So and then I don't know if on here. Again, this is more project based, but I want to make sure we also don't lose the annual reporting for us to get from Ives, from the Sebastopol Little League.
Right. And I think that actually, I think that's great that we're I think we should actually include that in the rules, but I'm happy to put it down here as well, so.
All right. And then let's last one ahead. Oh, just on the, this has probably already been taken consideration, but in the sign area, you know, to do signs for wayfinding and so forth, just to you know, do as much as possible, international symbols and, you know, things that other people with other languages and so forth can, can understand rather than having them all, you know, be written in different languages. That's possible. I know, I know there's certain symbols that we can use.
Right. I think that's a good idea, especially as the you know, we don't have a translator on staff to be able to provide signage. I know we did during COVID, but most of that COVID signage was actually provided by the county parks folks.
And let's see. And then for the, I was just, let's see, I, I guess we're not taking, we just had questions, right? No, we're not talking about suggestions or modifications or are you, where are we at with that?
And I think we still have questions because we haven't asked for public comment. Uh, I think we still have questions, because we haven't asked for public comment.
Yeah, okay. All right, that's all I think I have for questions right now.
I think something else?
Yeah, I was just thinking, receiving an annual report from Sebastopol Little League. I know from Wishman Hall, we're supposed to, the lease says we're supposed to report and be available to the city council on an annual basis. But the city never, as far as I know, in this entire year, has not asked me or requested, um, any particular type of information. So I sort of feel like that's something that needs to be on the city's calendar. If you want that information from us, you know, I think we're all willing, we just need to know specifically what it is that you want.
Right.
So if you're doing it for Little League, the city might consider looking at the other people who are required to report annually. It's kind of on the side.
How do you spell Waisheen?
W I S C H E M A N.
Thank you.
Just if it were spelled out, then we would know exactly what it is that you wanted to see.
Yes, and you know, there are, um, there are times like for major M parks funding and whatnot that, um, I'm asked for usage statistics. And I will absolutely say that I have asked usually the senior center, the pool and the community center for stats, but not the other smaller organizations like the Little League and you and others. So. Um, I probably need to figure out how to get a list together since, since we don't actually, I, I'm not actually a park supervisor. You know, as the go-between, I think it would be really helpful for, um, and that's actually something that planning commission, if you know of other organizations like this, um, let me know if you know who their context is, that would be like Kathy, I don't know who is all at Wishman Hall and who the appropriate contact would be. Um, and if there are others, that would also be helpful. Like I know Libby Park now has a preschool at it, but I don't have any idea who that contact is or how I would report those activities.
Yeah, we generally know who is in our building. We don't always know what their attendance is, but we know what ours is, you know?
Exactly.
Any other questions? Okay, um, if there's any member of the public that would like to make a comment on the planning commission's work plan, now would be your opportunity.
Rick, I think you're the only member of the public, so I'll give you a second to unmute yourself if you want, otherwise, um, assume you don't, uh, wish to come.
All right, so I'll just bring this back to the commission then for further kind of, oh, there he is. Rick, you have something to say?
Yeah, I'm just really knocked out by what you guys are doing. Keep going. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so now I'll bring it back to the commission for had further comments. Um, who would like to go ahead and start that?
And I can say what would be useful for me is, um, any comments on, I'm happy to, you know, share my screen. Uh, where those sort of three items I highlighted? The downtown plan, the specific plan for Northern Gateway and in parking Lou, where you feel they, you know, should be in the order of things. Um, and then any comments on, on the items that we just added?
So I want to, I'll kind of jump in on the, um, the downtown plan. I think that in my mind, I don't know if we've mentioned this to this group before, but there's a group of downtown business owners, myself included, that are, have asked the city or suggested the city apply for a Caltrans grant. It's called the Caltrans Sustainable Transportation Grant. Um, and I think kind of in my mind at least, um, what that grant could possibly do is, uh, fund something like this, you know, it, it's kind of, it can be used for a whole wide variety of things, but I think, you know, the interest of the downtown businesses is to really just improve Main Street and make it a more pedestrian and more user-friendly space and not make it feel like, you know, more prominently, uh, a, a car space. Um, so a little bit, I feel like, you know, the, uh, downtown's about, the special downtown plan update is going to be kind of a big lift financially and, and time-wise. So I feel like if we get the grant, then we should move it up and to be kind of timed with the grant schedule. Otherwise, I don't see it being, I don't see it happening just with the resources that we have without getting money to do something like that. So I, I guess I would just say, I think that's a little bit in limbo in terms of timing until, I think the grant awards aren't really till, uh, January of next year. So I don't really know if we have money to do something like that. I mean, in my mind, it's important. I think we should do it, but I've also recognized that again, sort of a, a grant that's going to give us money to do that, we're not going to do it anytime soon. So.
Thank you, Chair Fritz. And the engineering department will be applying for that grant this year. I think the application period is October-ish.
Yeah, I think they'll usually do it in October. It's an annual grant, uh, Caltrans does, and, uh, they usually do it in October and they get awarded in January.
Right. And what I have heard from others, because I've talked to other, uh, like regional parks who have gotten them before, is that usually people don't get it the first time they apply, but, you know, refine the application and um, then they have been, you know, then awards have been gotten for the same thing when it's applied for in a subsequent year.
Yeah.
Not that it wouldn't be great to get it the first year, but just in terms of expectations and how that might play into timing. Um, and I do know that the, uh, I believe the county is also applying like they did last year for uh, bicycle pedestrian master plan, which would include Sebastopol's bicycle and pedestrian plan as an annex to it. And they did apply for the Caltrans, uh, the same grant, they did not get it. I believe they're going to reapply though, so.
So that's what my, I would weigh in on that. So I think that's a little bit in limbo right now, I would say right now. Um, anyone have comments about the, the, um, the other issues that Carrie had highlighted?
And I actually think that probably reflects more this, this one that I've highlighted than the other, which is, you know, some of these things on the downtown plan revisions update. I'm not sure whether they're two separate items. Um, and maybe they should just be put together.
Yeah, seems like maybe that should be one item.
This is the grant.
Well, so the grant is to, so the actions are the actions from our land use and, uh, economic vitality sections of our general plan. The responsible, I'm adding engineering department, because the way to do that would be if we can get a grant for it.
Okay.
For the planning part of it.
Yeah.
Uh, but I think for now, I'm going to go ahead and just move that so that these two are together, because they're kind of the same to me in, in, in my mind.
Yeah.
And maybe it's actually, may, you know, one of the things I can use actually just, maybe we just combine these, because they are the same, they're just.
Yeah.
Different sections.
Combine them.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let's do that. And that's also the. I'll fix that later. It's captured, thank you. And then this one can just go away.
Yeah. And so if you go back to those other highlighted ones, you wanted input on?
Yeah. So I think this one is somewhat dependent on having an identified place for a parking garage as a city project.
Yeah.
Um, I do know that there is, there's a couple of things going on. Um, there isn't any um, intent to do anything with any of the parking lots. I know one of them was looked at for a mixed-use project, uh, the Pangrove Square, um, which I didn't know that I was called the Hot Monk Lot, just because it's the downtown lot next to Hot Monk. So when I did, when I wasn't the city planner, um, the, um, so there's no projects going on right now regarding downtown parking garage. It would take, obviously, with construction costs, a huge amount of money. Um, this is the type of thing people used to do with redevelopment funding, um, which is obviously not around anymore. Um, but you know, there always could be something that comes up. Um, I think in our housing element, there's a potential to revisit that in the future for potential housing, yeah, the housing mixed-use projects. Not that you couldn't do it differently, but I think the cost of just building a garage, you're talking about millions of dollars and I don't think, you know, the, the threshold for inland fee, if the point is to allow to be able to accommodate parking elsewhere, but also allow, uh, get some additional development with the requisite parking there. Um, it would take a long time to accumulate enough fees to be able to do that.
So then are you suggesting removing that?
Uh, I don't say removing it, I'm just, I'm not going to remove the language that's in the general plan.
Okay.
Um, but just in terms of your priorities, you know, the city doesn't, isn't looking at doing a parking garage at this point, so.
Yeah, I would put it at C.
Okay. And so, um, I'm not going to check, yeah, so.
Because that's part of the general plan.
That's a little, that's contrary to what Chair Fritz said, which was to potentially move it up, so I'm not going to discuss it.
So I guess.
So it seems impossible, so.
Well, I would, I, I guess my point, I, I wouldn't say move this up. I would say, I think it's a different item in my mind.
Maybe.
You know, I think this is like this idea of the parking garage, that's one thing, but I think there's also an issue with because of our parking requirements, you know, redeveloping anything downtown is kind of impossible. Um, and I think that's a separate issue to be discussed. Then, then this kind of parking garage concept, you know?
Right.
Is there a different way we can look at parking downtown that would allow, like you said, um, uh, development to move forward without having to get a variance every time you want to do some kind of development on an existing piece of land?
Yeah, got it. Okay, that makes more sense. It sounds very appropriate, I want to put appropriately, because that sounds very pro-development.
Does that capture what you're saying?
I think so, yeah. I mean, I, again, like, the, the, the property in mind is the one that contains, uh, portico and sage stone that's for sale that.
Right, that's what you brought up last time, yeah.
Yeah, so.
And there, and there's a number of those that are one-story, and if they could add or, um, or even convert office area for that, you know, second stories that are being used for office to residential. Uh, they could probably do that, um, if they have some parking through shared use approved by the commission.
Yeah.
But, but, yeah, it, are there, how are we looking at that and, and how are we assessing that, I think is. So I'm going to highlight that section of it as, uh, and maybe that's a short term, if the other is, is a long term.
Yeah, and I think that's a short-term conversation, and the, I think, yeah, the parking garage is a bigger.
Yeah, and I think at that point, it may not, for that thing, it may not require a consultant, it may be a.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's something.
What other cities are doing and that kind of thing, so.
Yeah.
All right. And I might just leave some of these items highlighted so that when we presented to council, um, there's, here's what the commission's thinking, you know, is represented appropriately.
And what else? Any, any other comments, uh, ever?
Yeah, so just want to clarify a couple of things. On the, if you go to the, let's see what page that is, where's this parks? And recreational master plan, long-term six B.
Yes.
So that, you know, there's a lot of stuff there. Um, yeah, I just kind of was thinking that the, the creek ordinance update is an important uh, item to review that I don't want it to get lost in with all the other, you know, bypass and all that. Um, because we're talking about, uh, keeping pollutants from going into the creek and just, you know, maintaining it. Um, so I think that's, if it's something that, um, I think should be by priority, if not, so, so that it doesn't go in with the whole master plan and, and we can't get to it. I don't know if we identify it as a separate item or how we might handle that.
Yeah, so I hadn't done that, and I guess that's a good point. I haven't read here, um, but it's, um, uh, because it's an added item, but I think.
Yeah.
Let me just underline it. Is that something that, um, should be before the long-range park master plan?
I guess, can I ask what, um, I'm not familiar with the creek ordinance that we have?
Sure. I can explain it about a paragraph.
Okay.
Because I have seen it in like five different cities. And what it is, is it basically says, no structures within, shall be constructed within thirty feet of the top of it. And the reason those were created with that exact same language is that it was kind of a FEMA provision uh, to, for cities as a way to regulate localized flooding and not have those properties subject to FEMA. Um, but it was only focused on preventing flooding to structures. It wasn't about the creek at all. And so like, you, you know, an asphalt tennis, uh, basketball court or a pressure-treated wood deck is not considered a structure if it's not more than two feet off the ground. So you could do that right on the creek, right within the creek bed, or, you know. Frankly, the Marin community I used to work in, we had to code-enforce on someone building a hot tub in a creek. You know, it's, it's, um, so it, it, it doesn't address the, um, and this is something I've talked with Jessica and Riley for, uh, as part of the common creek as well, and they have provided me some information and um, about best practices to, to update it, to make sure that it is, you know, about restoring and taking care of the creek, not just about not flooding structures.
And so if we, just wondering if we, um, do, you know, update the creek ordinance, you know, most creeks that are, most of the creeks in town are running through private property. So if we were to update the creek ordinance, would that be something that we could then, you know, send out to all property owners that have a creek running through their properties that they know, like this is, you know, I'm just wondering, how, how does that get communicated and enforced down the road, since most of what, most of the creeks through town are not in a public location that we can.
Sure.
See and access.
So they would be part of, um, you know, a lot of times people come in and ask the planning department questions about that when they have a creek. Uh, but yes, I think absolutely having an informational and it would actually be pretty easy to send it just to the people on the creeks, uh, because we can, you know, you can do, use a GIS map, and if you have the creek running across the waterline on a cross your property, you know, or, or within proximity, that you get the, uh, some educational information about it. And then those, you know, we, we've seen a lot of people, um, uh, come out to the Calder Creek Naturalization Project, um, meetings because they live on the creek and they're concerned about it. And so I think that is a way of helping those who want to do something but aren't sure what to do. Um, and how, what they should be doing, you know, in terms of planting or in terms of other things. Um, to help them understand what that means.
Yeah, and that, that's kind of what, I was also, part of my interest in that is the education part. Um, you know, of course, there should be some things that, you know, dumping and that kind of thing. But I think just the maintenance, the education with, of what, kind of almost like a responsibility, I guess. And, um, you know, if it's, if it's, I think that the ordinance perhaps, um, if we do an ordinance also, it, I think when they sell the property, they may have to disclose that or at least discuss that. So, you know, if you've got somebody new that coming in, we don't lose track of, you know, who owns property and change hands, but, you know, they, they have some of that same information. Hey, there's a creek running through that means you have these responsibilities and do's and don'ts that you can't do that.
Kathy?
Yeah, I wonder if this ordinance would also.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, ever, you weren't done.
Yeah, sorry. Well, um, is, I guess, okay, if we're still talking about this subject, yeah, I have other questions, but I think it sounds like Kathy might have a comment on this part.
Yes, I do. I wonder if this, um, work would include a good definition of what a creek is. Because as we've grown over the years, we've moved our creeks around. I know Carrie, you sent us that map of Calder Creek. I can't even figure out where it was. I can't even figure out where it was, but we have other creeks or drainage areas that are really. Part of our, um, flood control system, and so I think it's important if we have an ordinance that define what that is. So we know whether it's a creek or whether at certain times of the year, we just have a whole lot of water going down that way. I think that could help, particularly in the Laguna, because we've moved. The creeks in such a way that they do go through certain areas and now we're defining that as the area where they go. Whereas before they might have gone somewhere else, but there's still that creek and there's still that drainage area.
Anyone else have a comment on like this kind of creek ordinance issue? Deborah or Linda? Did you have something else, Kathy?
A question about.
Oh, go ahead, Linda.
Actually, I'm still, sorry, don't I still have the floor?
Oh, all right, obviously, I'm just looking for someone to talk about the creek, I'm just trying to wrap up the creeks, do you have?
Yeah, yeah, okay, I'm sorry, I thought, thought we were moving on to, somebody said they have something different, okay, good.
No, I just wanna stick with the creeks right now.
A question again about, um, setbacks, um, I know definition of creek is one thing, the other one is. You know, is it a seasonal easement and like what's the development, I mean, what is allowed in terms of, um. Um, setbacks for the riparian area, so it, I don't know, I'm sure. If they've been a moving target over the years because of the way we've developed, but the water still has to go somewhere, so. You know, like we found with, uh, Laguna Vista, even those wetlands weren't what they were, um. Um, originally, once they were culvertized and been there for a while, they were still considered a wetland, so.
It is, yes, and, um, most of the properties that, like that one. Um, and, you know, number within the Barlow, uh, Morris, sorry, I should say Morris Street. And, uh, that sort of line south, um, in addition to a lot of them being in the flood plain. Uh, they have the environmental scenic open space overlay. As well, where they go into the Laguna, um, but I do know that one in particular, yes, it still has map wetlands on the. Uh, and it's, I think it's the only primary wetland in the, in the back of that parcel.
And I think, you know, in terms of development, i- i- in my mind, you know, any development on a property where there's a. Creek is gonna have to go through a whole bunch of, you know, regulatory process. In my mind, this is more really for private property owners. Who might wanna build a deck or do these things that they don't really know they shouldn't be doing, you know, if, if someone's has a. Developers coming through and they're gonna do a development on a property, they're gonna get caught through, you know, the sequel processes to have to really investigate that and. And understand what the kind of regulatory requirements are, but for anything that's just like an existing lot. You know, people don't know what's allowed and what's not allowed and. So I, I, you know, and I, so I guess, you know, this conversation with the creeks, and I think. This is something that I'd be happy to move up higher in the list and even above the. Parks master plan, just because I feel like it's probably an easier lift than the park master plan. In terms of, you know, staff time and our time and the cost and everything, it's not, you know, we can look. To other communities for best practices and things where it's been done before, I don't think it's gonna be too complicated to come up with this. It's my thought about terms of where it should go, does anyone else have any thoughts about prioritization?
Yeah, I would agree with that, um, and, and I would not want to limit, um, the education portion just to. Actual property owners where the creek goes through, cause you could, you can own a property right next to it, it may not be on your property, but what, what you do there definitely. May run off or have an effect on, on the creek, so. Um, I, I don't wanna limit it just to owners, but maybe, I don't, I don't know how you would do it in particular areas, I, and I know, you know, of course, we're all, you know. Affected if, you know, because of what we put down in drains or, uh, street garbage and that kind of stuff, but. I think just at least, again, same thing, might be property owner next door, just don't realize, you know, some things that they're doing or. How they might be, or, or things they could plant or whatever to kind of help, even though the creek doesn't go right through their property.
Yeah, it could be like a certain distance from the creek bank or something like that, you know, if you live a hundred feet from the creek bank, those people all get notified or. Whatever seems an appropriate distance. I just made that up, Carrie.
Yeah, I was saying, there's more distance, uh.
Debbie? Debbie can't hear you.
Thank you, I have a question about the ordinance, once you let the people know, um. Who live within a certain area of the creek, if they decide to build a deck or anything like that, do they have to. Comply with environmental issues or is it just a, hey, best practices?
So if it, um. There's just two way to handle it, if, if, if it's in the creek ordinance that the setback shall be X feet away from. You know, the thirty feet from top of bank, um, for constructions what we have now, and if you kept that, um. What are you allowed to do within that thirty feet? Because your, it, it's structures need to be outside of thirty feet, but. Do you get to pave, do a paver patio, do you need to do, you know, can you do those other things or ship with thirty feet within, you know, thirty feet setback? Be more sanctuary saint, and no, you can't be, you can't do any artificial surface. Uh, within that area or something like that, and then it would be a, so it depends, but usually in an ordinance, if you said you can't put anything within that creek bank.
I guess I should rephrase my question, I get that, but like Chair Fritz said that he didn't know what the creek ordinance was. If he doesn't know what the creek ordinance was, I wonder how many people living on the creek know, so. Once they're notified, if they're in violation of it, then does that open a big can of worms? Or what does that mean as far as planning, will they come back to us and try to have a very, you know, does that make sense?
Yeah, I, I certainly have dealt with a number of code enforcement where someone has built a. Something within that thirty feet, um, in. Um, Mill Valley had some very, very small lots and they had a number of. I guess they had a lot of people expanding the existing homes and they would kept running against the thirty foot creek ordinance, so. You know, in that case, they would still have to apply for a variance or design the project appropriately. Um, but yeah, sometimes it's, you know, it's clearly going to. Um, stop repairing habitat from being able to, you know, climb the side of the bank or pass through the, press through along the creek. Um, if you're putting something in the creek or, you know, doing something, um, like a hot tub as a example, then yeah, we're put. We're not gonna recommend a variance, cause there's no way you could get a variance, I mean, meet the state requirements, our requirements for. Is it a reasonable construction of the property, you know, development of the property, well, no, that's not reasonable development, you shouldn't be doing that. Um, and, you know, how do you, how, how, how could the commission, I mean, maybe you could find, make a finding for it, but I suspect not, and we would usually. Um, at a staff level enforce and have them restore it.
Wouldn't it be the case that, you know, if someone had something, you know, now that's within, you know. And not necessarily a setback issue, cause a setback is what the ordinance is now, but if we come up with some other, you know, requirements for the ordinance. If people are out of compliance with whatever new items we bring forward, you know, they, they don't really have to necessarily comply with those. Because it's, you know, whatever date the ordinance is adopted, that's when it starts kind of thing, would that be?
That's kind of where I was trying to get to my next.
Oh, sorry, okay, thank you, so if someone already has, I'm just gonna use the brick patio in, within a creek. Or within the creeks, thirty foot, three creek setback, and the city decides to adopt. Um, no, you can't put anything in there, then that would become a non, what we call a non-conforming use. And they wouldn't be able to maintain it, they wouldn't have to take it out, um, if they did take it out, they wouldn't be able to put it back. Uh, and they could do sort of ordinary repair, you know, smooth out the bricks or re-sanding or whatever. Um, hopefully, i- we can provide some guidance, you know, that's not in the ordinance, but just educational about what is, what the best way to do that would be. Um, so they're not putting, you know, stuff of dyes in between the bricks that then contaminate the water and stuff like that. It's just regular sand or something that's compatible, uh, or we're, they're able to end it in a way that the, it's not eroding into the creek. But no, they would not need to, if, if it's already there on the date, the adoption, the ordinance goes into effect, they're not required to move, remove it under our code. And then certainly the, you know, the interlocational components of it, of, hey, you know, removing invasives and putting in, um. Native grasses and stuff, that, that's not ever gonna, I don't think can be requirement. Other than if someone's doing a major property redevelopment. Um, and actually our subdiv, I have worked on a project that would have required a bridge over a creek, um, it was. Withdrawn before it went, um, came to you guys, uh, for preliminary review, just for the owners, um. Own reasons, but, um, you know, they would have been looking at subdividing a property where it was split in two by the creek. And so by a creek, and so they would have had to build, they had a small bridge, but they would have had to build a bigger bridge, allow fire trucks to get across. Um, and be able to turn around as part of it, and that would need to go through. Uh, obviously, the Planning Commission City Council for the subdivision, our subdivision ordinance actually says that when a creek is involved, that there's. That we look at what should be there, and so this could actually give some guidance of towards that. Uh, rather than, you know, uh, the commission shall determine what, how to, how to deal with the creek, what the creek plan is or whatever it is called. Um, and so it'd be helpful for that or for something that's in the ELS, uh, SOS, um. Areas, um, or if people just wanted to do it, yeah, voluntarily. So there's maybe a couple of things, but mostly that part component of it is probably gonna be educational and not a requirement for people. And that's getting really detailed on what that ordinance might be, but that's just trying to get.
Is there anything else on this creek discussion?
Okay, and so for now, I have moved it above the Park and Rec Master Plan. And I do agree, it's a much smaller chunk, I mean, if I had time, I could almost write this myself, as a little guidance from, uh, from Jessica and Riley, but. Um, like I've done Park and Rec Master Plans too, but that was as a consultant, and for, for people working on it, so. Um, the, I am still leaving it below the I was Park Master Plan implementation, let me know if. That seems good. And then, you know, everything else, everything that's numbered here, we're basically working on right now, so it's. Kind of one of those ne- next up things at this point.
No one has any other comments on that, um, uh, you can go back to Everett and your next item, Everett.
Great, thank you, Paul, sorry about the introduction before, wasn't aware what you were doing there. So on, let's see, um. So under the review and up, update new zoning ordinance, uh, let's see, yes, that page, perfect. Um, so it's kind of the same thing with the, um, the food truck item kind of below, uh, that wanted to kind of. Get lost within that clarification, cause it's more about not necessarily clarifying or. Um, it's kind of almost more new regulation, um, and, uh, in that we require, uh, establishments. To provide food, uh, at all hours that alcohol being served, so, um, and some are compliant, some are not, and, you know. That it's difficult to, you know, for some businesses to justify and be able to have a, you know, kitchen open and so forth. So this could be a way to help, a couple things, number one, help them satisfy those requirements, number two, create some additional. Uh, jobs essentially for, you know, vendors, um, and then also, um. To, just from a, um, responsibility standpoint, make sure people eat, if they're gonna be drinking. Um, that kind of thing, uh, help, you know, maybe some of the downtown merchants in evening or nighttime. Um, and then also under, uh, a food court site, um, I was hoping kind of. More the regulations perhaps even consider, and again, have might have been the funding and grants and so forth, but. Uh, I know some cities have an actual pad or, uh, where a truck can pull up. It's set up for, for a food truck, um, you can plug in, you know, there's all kind of amenities there. So that's kind of what I was hoping that we can maybe look at as a possibility to provide that. And I think it would be of a good benefit, um, you know, that people can walk to those places and so forth, so.
And so would that be a city sponsored, or if someone came to the city wanting to organize something like that? Similar to the farmer's market or the high business marketplace?
Yeah, well, that, yeah, I mean, if it's, if it's organized, like vendors coming in and doing that, that's one thing, what I was talking about is maybe a city sponsored site. That is literally just set up for, specifically for a food truck or two food trucks to come in if, you know, and at some point. Cause I think the whole idea is to, you know, this, in order to bring food trucks in here, it has to be economic feasible. And for some of these vendors, it's difficult, because, you know, people don't know, it's gonna take them a while to get going, to, you know, so. Trying to make it as easy as possible, maybe down the road, I, you know, would talk with the city, partner up with other businesses, whatever, try to subsidize at least to get them kind of going. But that's, you know, that's down the road, but what I was talking about is an actual city sponsored owned space. The truck pulls up and, you know, plugs in or whatever. You know, with other commissioners.
Okay, so that's definitely something we would wanna talk to council about, cause there's a. Is there, if there's an infrastructure, if it's who's gonna do a, you know, a, a lot of logistics?
Yeah, so it would just.
And also, there's probably frankly, existing restaurant owners who might wanna say something about that if it's.
Yeah, I mean.
It, you know, maybe good, it's a sort of a restaurant incubator, right?
Yeah, yeah, and it could be later at night, because a lot of, you know, nobody's open. So that's what, kind of more what I was talking about, but I think just maybe have it on there, it might be something that the commissioner just kind of kicks around and gets some information. And then maybe, you know, talks council about it, but however you think that might be best. Uh, positioned there and, uh, I don't know, rest of commissioners might think on something like that, but, um, you know, I kind of just see that. It, we need to address that issue of, of, uh, meeting that requirement of, of people surround called having food available.
Does, does anyone know about the library in town, cause I feel like they are gonna be small little food. You know, it might be, and, and there are a few places I know the kids go to in town, there's pizza pizzazz, it's, or whatever it's called, that's open till. Two AM, so I'm just thinking about the current people and it's been really hard for people through COVID and. You know, to stay afloat, um.
Yeah, it wouldn't be anything for, you know, like competition or to create that, it would just be for, you know, at times and places that, you know, make sense or. Or where rest, two restaurants get together and, you know, rather than they each open up a kitchen or something, um, they can, you know. Uh, partner to have a food truck there and satisfy their food requirement.
As I am, uh, since that's a little bit different from zoning ordinance cleanup stuff, I'm moving that into zones. And this may, you know, this may be something that, um, if it's okay, you know, to pull out and put into the staff report.
Yeah.
Uh, it's up to the commission, but, you know, obviously, some of these would require kind of council buy.
Yeah, but yeah, those are my points, that I think it should be, it's kind of a separate thing and.
Great, okay.
I mean, I like the idea personally, but, you know, yeah, I think it's something that, I don't know that we can just do as the planning commission.
No, but, I mean, it has to start somewhere, we can at least start the conversation.
I know a lot of cities have like a night, you know, like Thursday food or something like that, maybe.
Right, Alameda used to have like a Saturday morning or something, I think it kind of coincided with the flea market or something that they had out at the old airbase. And I know, I know a lot of people, that was their thing for the day, they were gonna get somewhere and.
Yeah, and I think, um, you know, there's certainly. You know, city parking lots in the evenings downtown that are pretty empty, that, you know. Taking up a little bit of space in one of those, you know, to allow food trucks to pull in and providing, said, you know, electrical hookup or whatever, you know, a, a lot of them, I don't. That's, they're fairly self-contained, they don't necessarily need a lot, but, um, I think it's an interesting idea.
They currently do it at Riley Street, I mean, it's a little bit out of the way, so I don't know. They currently do it at Riley Street. I mean, it's a little bit out of the way, so I don't know. But there, there is that lot that the Barlow uses, that overflow lot, you know, wanna see if the council, yeah.
Yeah, so we do have a couple of food trucks in town. I know El Cornell has one, they. Put that in other places because obviously they have a full restaurant, um, but they do carry during out of that as well. Um, there's usually a food truck at the gas station right across the street from the Fairfield Hotel. Um, and yeah, so Riley's has a um. A very good uh, food truck, I'll say, and uh, I've been there quite a few times. Uh, and they're they're there Monday through Friday, so the office workers there, but a lot of other people, you know. Go there, you know, during the week for as a lunch stop too. And we do, we do have allowances for that already in our code and in private parking lots.
Yeah, because I've noticed one also next to Jasper's sometimes.
Oh, yes, they do do one as part of their provision for. Food for the bar.
City Donuts to town for Black Friday this year and it was really sick, people loved it.
Very popular, like, you know, I can really see it, um. You know, if it was like on the, in the, the what Carrie calls the hot monk parking lot, you know, that, uh, you know, a few food trucks there in the evenings. You know, could really actually help to liven up downtown a little bit. Downtown can feel a little. Um, quiet in the evenings, especially, you know, comparing to the Barlow, if you're in the, you know, walking downtown, you go to the Barlow. Barlow's hopping and downtown's a little quiet, but if you had something like this that would. Eat up the draw, and I'll actually just throw out there, I was walking by a couple of weeks ago in the evening. There was something going on in retrograde in the evening and it was like. Uh, a pop-up restaurant, um, like very, just like one night. And somehow people knew about it because it was full of people and. Danielle owner lets, you know, a friend or someone she knows come in and just do a, you know. An evening of uh, kind of fixed price, I think, kind of menu sort of thing and people come in and. Um, but it was really cool because it was like people downtown and eight o'clock on a, you know, Wednesday night.
Yeah, and that's actually something that Sabascal's been good at, even beforehand when. Before Ramangajan took over the whole thing, they were a shared kitchen and before that, I think it was also a shared kitchen between two different restaurants and. I I know there's a new business coming into town that was reported that it used to be a pop pop up and now it's and. Snowman Burger was the same thing, they were a pop up and now they're in the little shopping center on, uh, doesn't help.
So I think it's kind of a kind of fun idea to liven up things a little bit.
And Everett, uh, if it's okay, I'm actually gonna pass this on to the relaunch Sabascal folks as well as an idea, because I think that's that may, it's that sort of economic development realm is actually. They probably have more potential and more focus on that kind of a thing than the planning.
That's actually, that's perfect, that was, I think that, yeah, that's that's perfect.
That's a good idea.
This is for my email screen, if it does, I apologize, but I just want to make sure I get this down for them.
And, you know, I I want this to be a positive experience and, but I think maybe perhaps. One of the ways to move this forward, which is why I, you know, said the language of in order to. Restaurants to meet the requirement for that, you know, X Y Z. You know, I think that it, so it doesn't get kind of get lost, that's, you know, what we're trying to do, so. Um, you know, again, that helps the restaurants, we're not, we don't want them to have any further demands on them, but let's, you know. Let's figure out a way to work together.
Well, I think it would be kind of interesting if the, you know, the bars that are open on Main Street that don't really have food service. Similar to what you can do in the Barlow, you know, some of the bars there that you can order food from the bar and have it delivered to the bar from these food trucks, you know. You know, I think, I think that's kind of a cool idea.
I don't mind talking to Laura either because I wrote a whole proposal on food trucks in Sabascal, so I have it all detailed out. Well.
Sounds good, I will send her the bullet and you can contact her with the big, with the big.
That true, because I even thought of what you thought of, like, I was like. You could have two restaurants get together and do an iron chef competition or something where people can take.
Absolutely.
And like, you know, rate them, like, we want to get the community involved in like fun and other things to do, and so, yeah, I'll. Uh, if you want it, either way, I'm I'm happy.
I'll just CC you on it, how's that sound?
That sounds great.
Up committing, Mr. Chair.
What's that?
Sounds like she she's volunteering for a subcommittee. You know, thank you, that's uh, that's exactly what I'm trying to get to, so thank you. And that's all I had.
Right, anyone else have a? Any uh, items on the work plan they'd like to discuss?
Okay.
Um, I have a couple actually. And some of these, so in the um. And Carrie, you know, I've talked about some of these things, um, in terms of the kind of. Kind of cleanup stuff for the zoning code, and I don't know if you want to go through the specific items right now or have that just be.
Um, if you, if you can email that to me, I can just paste them into this, if that's okay with everybody.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, um, and then. So one thing, and I also mentioned this to you, Carrie, and I know it's kind of a weird. I I still not quite sure what we're supposed to do with it, but the parklet question, the city council asked us to.
I can answer, I can answer for you now. Because none of the city staff or the engineering department staff have had time to deal with that, they have, you know, taken through the process. It is included in the budget discussions for this year, just so, because council said go do this, but they never authorized any money for it, so. Uh, we don't want to go through all processes and have them go forty thousand dollars, no way, you know, kind of a thing. Uh, so that will be part of the budget discussions.
But I guess the mic, and again, this was very, the way it happened at the city council meeting was very strange. Because they said, yes, we want to keep the parklet in front of Retrograde and Sunshine Cafe, but the other ones. And I don't remember the exact language, it was like, let's have the planning commission discuss, and I don't know exactly what they want us to discuss, are are we the ones to decide?
Understanding is whether or not to make that permanent, the uh, one in front of Retrograde, clearly there is business support from all of those businesses. Although I've actually reached out to the um, Ismael, the owner of the Sunshine Cafe, uh, to talk with her directly, I don't know if she was at that council meeting, I was out of town that week. The um. So there's support for that and there and there's no surrounding businesses opposing that, there are at the others, and so that was a. How do we resolve that? We're not sure we want to make it permanent yet.
So, but is that something that we should, that the council wants us to discuss and sort through, that's kind of my impression, the the council kind of want us to sort through that. So I don't know if that's the case. Or not, because it was kind of weird the way they did it, so, but if they do want us to discuss it, I would like to put that on our work plan to discuss. And, you know, invite the public and have a public meeting and have people give feedback or whatever, and then we can talk about it and give the council a recommendation, but. You know, I just know businesses are waiting to find out what's going on and they're just kind of hanging, so if there's something that we, and I get the budget part of it, but even. You know, if if this. I guess it's, you know, and the first step is to figure out if it's permanent or not, then there's a budget discussion as to, okay, this is permanent, then how we pay for it. But we don't even know if it's gonna be permanent yet, it might go away, when the temporary use permit goes away, and then there's no budget conversation, so I guess.
Correct, and a lot of that has to do with the city engineer talking with Caltrans. Um, they have, I believe they have extended the per- the temporary parklet until, I forget when, the end of this year, I think. But so far I don't, I mean, they're, they have issued a couple in a different Caltrans district for a permanent parklet. Um, but not in this district. Uh, so if, you know, if we can't get the encroachment permit for it for any of them, even the retrograde one, which everyone supports. That's sort of where it's like, well, if we can't get it for retrograde where there's no opposition, then. We don't, the the other questions are null and void at that point, right? It's, so let's try this one first and then see if we can. Figure out how to do that with Caltrans. Um, and there are all, there's also some intersection issues with the one at um, screening Mimi's that are, I know that. Caltrans and city staff are already working on um, for some of the crosswalk issues there, that sort of dual. Ten feet away apart, two crosswalks that are. The Caltrans has his responsibility for right now, and it's like, how did we, we keep talking about, how are you gonna resolve that?
Um, and then. My other items are just other ideas I have for just.
Can I say something on the parklet?
Oh, sure, go ahead.
So I I honestly think it should be done the exact opposite way, which is we should look and and I'll have to obviously not be part of this discussion. Because I have a parklet in front of my store, but I think, you know, we don't really know what we need the budget for, if we don't know how many are staying. Or how many are going, and to Chair Fritz's point, I hear all the time from business owners who are impacted from working. And, you know, they just want to know, like, are they gonna be here, we, I. I've heard of people who have asked for rent reductions because the parklets affecting their business, I think, I think the business owners need to know what's gonna happen. And then if we can have that discussion and just decide what can stay and what can go, that'll also help you with your budget. Knowing, okay, they're all gonna stay, so here's the budget we need, or we're asking for the budget for four of them, so just my two cents.
That's a helpful perspective, thank you.
Anyone else parklets? And then these other things, Carrie, I think are just I ideas, and I can email these to you, and we talked about some of them, but just ideas for other possible presentations, just sort of educational.
Oh, absolutely, we don't need to. I'm happy to do those, as like as we have in the past, absolutely.
So I'll send that separately. Anyone else work plan items? All right, hopefully that's helpful, Carrie.
It is helpful, um, I guess I'm curious, are you, is the commission comfortable doing a um. Approval of this within its current form? Um, or do you want to see it one last time with these revisions included?
I think it would be helpful to see one last time, in my perspective.
I don't think there's a rush to get it to council, council is booked full through July at this point, so. And and we obviously have six items that we're already working on in the top parts. But but it is helpful actually, as I kind of start to think, you know, my budget is due, and if these are gonna happen next year. My budgets are due in January, February for the next fiscal year, and it helps me understand. What I should be looking at for all that, so thank you, it's.
Yeah, I think this is a helpful process, I'm glad you've kind of brought this, because it's good to. Sort of focus us and for us to know what's coming up and what's on our plate and things like that, and help, you know, prioritize things for the city, I think it's good. The tool.
Thank you.
Which brings us to our training.
Yes, did you want to take a break first or jump right in?
Anyone want to take a break or just move ahead? I'm okay to move ahead, but I'm open.
Okay, I'm gonna try this, and I did test out the sound before y'all came in, so hopefully it's Rox's time, let me know, and I'm gonna play it. If it works, I'm gonna try meeting myself. There we go.
In this course, we are going to.
I can't see anything.
That's the easy one.
Oh, no, no, we can't, so it was coming through your computer.
Of planning to plan and preparing for the planning process. Identify the five phases of planning required to create a plan. And identify reasons why the phases are necessary. We will be focusing on how the planning process works to identify and strengthen a community's character. First, let's establish that we are all planners. We all plan in our daily lives, some of us plan to go to the store. Or go on a vacation, and then there's long-range plans like weddings or retirement that are a little more involved. So even if you're new to the planning process, you've definitely gone through steps to plan. So we're gonna break those out and reference those closer to how a comprehensive plan would be developed. Planning is a way to think about the future, to recognize our goals and achieve them. Planning enables communities to undertake a process that puts them in the driver's seat rather than just reacting to. What comes their way. Keep in mind that there are specific requirements for certain planning steps that are required by the state's planning enabling acts. And we covered that in some detail in chapter three. New development can bring out real concerns about changes in land use. And for communities that are growing very quickly, um, this can really cause concern about losing the character of the community. That they fell in love with. Through planning, local governments can really think about how to preserve that unique character while also. Planning for infrastructure improvements while thinking about how they're gonna deliver services. And where they're going to invest their time and resources. The comprehensive plan really provides a way for decision makers to balance change. While also protecting unique community character. Residents want the process of planning to result in that preservation of community character. Uh, maintaining a quality of life and also encouraging economic opportunities. So what is community character? Uh, community character is really best described as those really distinguishing features. Uh, they can be physical features or architectural or cultural features. In many areas of a country, tribes and tribal lands play a key role in the identity of the region. The history of settlements and indigenous lands really come together to create that community character. And it's what makes places unique. Although there's no one single way to plan, there are several established techniques. And we will be sharing those with you today. We're gonna take the mystery out of the planning process and make the process a little more straightforward. Now that we've learned about the importance of the plan and preserving that unique character of our communities. We will move on to chapter two to discuss the steps of the planning process. We're gonna be discussing the planning process here and why the plan is an important document. If you're just starting in the planning process, we want you to understand two fundamental things. Um, first, there is no one exact way to plan. And second, the planning process needs to be flexible enough to respond to change. As the planning process unfolds, planning commissions need to adapt to the information that they are going to be receiving. And also what comes out of the public participation process. Any planning process has a series of interrelated steps and together they result in a plan. Each successive step builds on the previously completed steps. And the feedback that the planning commission receives from the community. May also mean that you have to go back and repeat that step, start over or modify direction. So why do we plan? Uh, we plan so that public officials and private citizens can make informed decisions. That will affect their community. The plan is just one way to sort of reach that balanced future. Where we balance that fiscal and social responsibility. But there's often an essential tension that is experienced during the planning process. Some believe that planning for growth and change might cause existing residents to want to leave the community. While others see it as an important way to maintain residents, attract new residents. While also building new infrastructure, schools and providing more services. That essential tension around growth, stagnation or decline is unique to each community. Effective use of the right planning tools can help to balance these tensions. And preserve that special community character that makes your community unique. And preserve that special community character that makes your community unique. With effective planning, communities can better make and coordinate individual decisions. So that those decisions complement each other rather than set up conflict. We talked about building that mosaic in chapter three. And so this is sort of an extension of that conversation. So good planning really gives private landowners and developers also, um, a, a roadmap. And it defines what it is the community desires and where that should be. This facilitates private development that is consistent with community goals. And helps to retain existing business and industry. Um, planning also supports the fiscal health of a community and can really help with that community's bottom line over time. With very strategic decisions. Those decisions might be made around infrastructure. For example, does the community want to extend the infrastructure into new fields that have no infrastructure now? Or do they want to focus those resources on existing places like the downtown or places that are already built? Certainly funding infrastructure improvements through a thoughtful planning process is more responsible. Than just playing catch up to unplanned development. So why is comprehensive planning important? So we've talked about, uh, how it balances ideas around growth and stagnation and decline. We've also talked about the efficient, uh, use of services and infrastructure and government spending. Most of us interact with government on a daily basis. If we drive on a road, go to a park, uh, we drink water. Uh, from the tap. And so an effective plan really is going to affect all of us on some level on a daily basis. A comprehensive plan will not solve every conflict around land use. But in truth, advocates for both development and preservation typically want the same thing. They want more planning or better planning. A successful plan really needs to be local and it contributes to the quality of life. What is interesting and unique about that community? But they typically do plan for growth as well. And so they want to make sure that the growth that is planned for fits that community. All right. Next up in chapter three, we're going to be talking about how to plan to plan. See you then. In this chapter, we're going to be talking about some of those initial steps that need to be taken before we start to plan. So we're going to be calling that planning to plan. The planning process is something we are all familiar with. And we use it nearly every day for short-term actions like going to the grocery store. It's really just a way that we get from point A to point B. Let's think of a simple example, like building a fence. Before we build the fence, we're going to draw up a plan about where the fence is going to be. And we'll think about our budget and that might determine what kind of fence that we buy or how long our fence can be. Planning is really just that vehicle of who's going to do what and when and how are they going to do it? Creating a comprehensive plan is actually very similar. First, you need to know what the plan is going to look like. Think of that like our blueprint for the fence. Next, you need to identify resources. Who's going to be involved? And what does our budget look like? Finally, a schedule will lay out the development of the plan, the timelines and deadlines for completion. So in short, the first step of the plan is actually planning to plan. Making sure that those decisions are made upfront, uh, what the necessary steps are. Will make the overall process a lot more efficient. Because it will outline when and how the community is engaged in that process. So at the end, there needs to be consensus about the actual planning process itself. As well as the final written plan. And we'll see where there are key steps along the way. That, uh, the public needs to be involved in the process. And this community buy-in for the plan is really important to the end of process. To making sure that the plan is useful and relevant. Planning to plan generally involves three main steps. The first step is that plan, uh, planning to plan and the budget for the process. Followed by stakeholder identification and community education. The logistics of the planning process are laid out during that preparation step. Think of a timeline that's set up with key decision points. When you're going to involve the public. Maybe what are the key topics that the public needs to be a part of? And when might the main events be? During this early process, there may be a steering committee that guides this initial planning step. If the planning process is guided by a steering committee, it's really critical that the authority of that group be made clear in the beginning of the process. The planning commission can empower that steering committee to make key decisions along the way. Or they have the option to have the steering committee be more of an advisory body. And this would lead the planning commission to make those key final decisions. But the authority must be made clear from the outset of the process. The process could take a serious downturn if the steering group believes that they have the ability to make decisions. Only to have those decisions then reversed by the planning commission. Once decided if that steering committee does have authority. Um, they will need to have some pretty specific rules of conduct and meeting procedures. And additionally, they will also need to follow Open Meetings Act, um, requirements that are in your state. So this will mean that they also need to keep records, uh, available minutes and all correspondence available, uh, to the public. This is a point where the community also has to take a look at itself and ask some fundamental questions. The first would be, do we have the capacity to plan, uh, or do we need some outside help? A typical planning project might require some specialized skills that just are not there within the membership of the planning commission. In some cases, the community can't get some specialized education or training to fill those gaps. If outside help is needed. Keep in mind that there might be additional budget that is necessary. And the legislative body or the elected officials would have to approve that budget. Now, in most communities, budgets are established the year prior to when the funds are expended. So if you're planning to plan, you might need to think as much as a year in advance to make sure that those funds are available. The next step in the process after budget and planning to plan is really identifying the public. Key players that will call stakeholders. And by stakeholder, I mean somebody that has a stake in the process or a stake in the issue. So this can be a very broad group of people and maybe it's certain groups that are brought in for specific issues. Sometimes there are statutory requirements to bring in certain entities into the comprehensive planning process. And this would be found in your state's planning enabling legislation. In Arizona, for example, municipalities are required to plan alongside uh, public land management agencies, uh, military, airports, school districts and other associations of government. There are many ways to engage these stakeholders. And thinking through that as you're planning to plan would be an important decision. For example, um, maybe personal interviews might be a good way to start that process. And then perhaps there would be focus groups to invite certain stakeholders to discuss, uh, key issues that they're involved with. Online engagement, social media and survey tools are quickly emerging as another way to work with different stakeholder groups. So another part of planning to plan is educating the community. A community will have a hard time planning if as a collective, they don't know where they've been, where they are. Or have a sense of where they might be going. So when preparing, the planning commission can focus on key issues in the community that need special attention. And help to prepare and organize special informational sessions for key stakeholders. This will contribute to an effective comprehensive planning process. This process also allows community planners to select effective public engagement tools. For those key educational sessions. These tools could be used in combination for various stakeholder groups and areas of interest. For example, a community education event around the design of a multi-use path. Might look very different from an event around the need for senior citizen housing. So that initial planning process will help to define the major tasks of the planning process. Determine a budget, figure out if consultant help or outside help is needed. Design a system to involve citizens and create an opportunity to develop community ownership. For both the process and the plan. So is there any formal steps that have to be taken before we start to plan or can we just start to plan? Typically, communities cannot start to plan if they don't have a planning commission. So establishing a planning commission is typically always a required first step. In some states, it is the county that is mandated to have a planning commission. And so, uh, perhaps you are planning at the county level and it's as part of a mandated requirement. It's really important to check your state planning enabling acts to determine what steps have to occur prior to the planning process. It's very common in the early planning stages to have to let neighboring jurisdictions know that you're beginning the planning process. In Michigan, it is required by the planning enabling acts. And so this is essentially the very, very first step in the planning process. Working with the public is fundamental to the planning process and we're going to be discussing that more in chapter four. Welcome to chapter four, working with the public. Working with the public is integral to any planning process because it really provides that big picture perspective. That would be absent if only the planning commission was left to write the plan. In order to collect all the data that's needed to really make a plan. Uh, the public has to be a part of the process. The needs of the community are then translated into the goals and objectives. And this really drives the content of the plan. So part of engaging the public means keeping them informed about the progress on the plan. From the beginning to through the middle and to the end. This is often done through presentations that summarize progress. And look for input at key points in the program. Or maybe they're presentations that really address issues that have come up in the plan. Or it's a chance to air out certain policies that are being presented. Throughout the comprehensive planning process, the planning commission should really just take every opportunity that they can to gain support through education and involvement of the residents in their community. The planning process is made up of several steps. And on the left there, you can see there are some initial inputs like, uh, the data. Uh, what are the issues in the community and what kinds of information are we learning from research and asking questions? There are also controls on the planning process itself. And these controls are set through, uh, due process requirements, the planning enabling acts and public participation methods. And to ultimately make sure that the plan is useful, the planning commission needs to think about the methods that they're going to use to work with the public. So part of working with the public is developing a public participation plan. That will identify those key stakeholders, how they're going to be engaged and when that's going to be happening in the planning process. Another really important element of that public participation plan is to think about who the stakeholders are, um, but also maybe who is not at the table, who is not on the list that should be on the list. There are certainly groups in communities that are historically underrepresented that are not at the table. So that public participation plan is a really key and time to think about, uh, who needs to be there and how they're going to be invited. And who's going to reach out to those communities? So in most planning enabling acts, there is only one point at which the public must be invited into the process and that is the public hearing. And the public hearing occurs at the end of the planning process. But this should not be the only time that the public sees the plan or reviews the plan. Our hope is that there'll be public participation all along. So by the time that the plan is, you know, at public hearing, everyone already knows about it. Everyone knows what's in the plan. They've been a part of it and there won't be any surprises. So even though that public hearing is required at the end and it is useful and important. Uh, we would like to see the public involved far earlier in the process. It is really important to document each step in the process of planning. Whether it's a steering committee, planning commission or planning team. All of those entities need to make sure that they keep minutes. They keep all of the documentation, the studies, results from interviews, surveys. And especially public notices or any required published notices for the plan. Those should be kept well after the planning process is over. This supports the validity of the plan and can help in possible court challenges later on. So in this chapter, we've just talked about the public participation plan. How data, uh, will be input into the plan and then also some of the planning enabling act statutes and due process and how that can affect planning methods. In the next chapter, chapter five, we'll be learning about collecting and analyzing data. Welcome to chapter five. Uh, in this chapter, we're going to be talking about the importance of data. Because really assessing a community can help to better understand past and current conditions. And it's an important step in the planning process. So in order to start making assessments about current conditions for the future. Uh, we really need to collect information that's related to key issues. And start to analyze that information. Analyzing data and creating projections will help to create a plan that is based in fact. The data ultimately lays the groundwork for strategies and policy recommendations that are part of the plan. The collected data should relate to each element that will make up the plan. Now, data collection can be done through a variety of techniques. Um, and there's many choices on how to collect data. So some examples of common data are the US census or state census. Or sometimes there's very particular local or county data like. or sometimes there's very particular local or county data like building permit information that can be helpful data in the planning process. Surveys early on in the process can also be really informative as well as personal interviews. Data can help the planning team describe existing conditions as well as future trends, and this will enable the planning team to really form a clear basis for each element of the plan. So combining data with surveys or personal interviews can also help the planning team to strike a balance between differing opinions on various issues. Although comprehensive plans should include information and goals that are customized to that community, most plans address these following topics. There's the historical and background information, the data and trends that we talked about. There are the, these are the existing conditions and projections. Second is community issues, vision, goals, and objectives. Finally, there's policy and implementation strategies. Often, there are functional elements of the plan or subject matter elements like housing or transportation and demographics. It's important to check your state enabling act to determine if there are specific elements required by law that must be in the plan. Next up, in chapter six, we will be discussing how goals and objectives are set. Welcome to chapter six, Setting Goals and Objectives. Setting goals and objectives is a critical task, and it's one that is often overlooked by many communities. Goals and objectives are based on the needs and wants of the public in addition to what was determined by the information that was gathered. These statements are the clearest indication of where it is the community wants to go and how they're going to get there. Without clear statements of goals and objectives, policy decisions made on the basis of the plan might not really reflect the true desires of local residents. The planning commission should set goals that are designed to address the issues that came up during the public meetings and issues that were discovered as part of the analysis. The goals should build on the community's unique characteristics, strengths, and opportunities. For example, a goal might address inadequacies in certain facilities or services, or perhaps an issue with water quality, or something like a general threat to the community's well-being. When considering the process shown here, remember the inputs, controls, and mechanisms that all contribute to setting goals. For example, perhaps in the planning process, an issue came up around the lack of affordable housing and the fact that this lack of housing is driving away younger populations from living in that community. And information shows that the median home value is considerably higher than in surrounding communities. So a goal might be to provide an adequate supply and variety of housing types to meet the housing needs of present and future residents. And this might start with an objective to develop an affordable housing plan that will allow the community to identify the needs of current and future residents. So as we move through the planning process, the recommendations get more specific. The goal and objective would be followed up with a policy. And in this example, the policy might be to complete a market study on housing needs that identify the specific number of affordable housing units needed within the next five or 10 years. Another policy might be to affect how increasing housing density maybe would affect water and sewer services in the next 10 years as well. Now that we have the data, goals, and objectives, we are ready to start drafting the plan. Join me in chapter seven to learn more. Hi, welcome to chapter seven. In this chapter, we'll be talking about the steps needed when drafting the plan or writing the plan. Completing a draft plan is the process step just prior to adopting the plan, and it's often greeted with a real sense of relief. The draft plan really contains the chapters that reflect the planning process, the data, goals, issues, and objectives that were addressed during the planning process. One of the challenges that drafters of the plan face is really how to present the information in an accessible format. In this context, longer is not necessarily better. The most effective plans are those that are succinct and focused. Making the plan user-friendly and easier to read really increases the likelihood that it will be used broadly to guide decisions in the future. In the chart shown here, note particularly the controls on the top and the mechanisms on the bottom. What I want to point out here is that while the planning team or consultants actually write the text, it is the planning commission or the final approving body, perhaps the elected body, that will determine or control the content of the plan. After the initial draft is completed, an internal review of the plan conducted by the team will ensure consistency throughout the document. The planning team as a whole should be involved in the review of the document, and any kinds of inconsistencies with goals and objectives should then be resolved. Following that internal review and any other type of review that might be required by state law or local ordinance, the draft plan is then released into the community. This begins the formal adoption process. This final step of public interaction is really necessary to ensure that the plan is indeed consistent with the public needs and wants, and it's a key point to provide the community with an opportunity to comment on the plan. All right, we are almost ready to adopt the plan. Join me in chapter eight to learn more about this final step. We are near the end of the planning process. For chapter eight, we will learn about the steps involved with adopting the plan. Procedures for adopting the plan vary greatly from state to state. Some states require that plans are reviewed by adjoining entities, a regional planning agency, or even a state planning agency before final adoption. In many places, there is a mandatory review period while the plan is available for public review. Some require adoption by the planning commission, while other states require adoption by the elected body. It's important that you know and follow the statutory requirements for adopting a comprehensive plan in your state and locality. Usually, a public hearing with prior notice is required before final adoption. The public hearing is typically the last opportunity for public to comment on the plan just prior to adoption. At this point in the process, the public should have had a chance to comment on the plan, you know, many times over, so the public hearing is usually simply a formality. It is recommended that the planning commission include an appendix to the plan to list all comments that were received during any formal comment periods. The draft plan might include a response to those comments received and indicate why a particular comment did or did not result in a change to the plan. If a comment did not result in a change to the plan, there should be a reason given that's also included in that draft document. After the final draft is completed and appropriate changes have been made, the plan can then be adopted. A successful adoption process actually begins long before this step. If the elected body has been involved in the planning process since the beginning, there's much less chance that there's going to be any conflicts or surprises when we get to the adoption phase. An involved public in the process also means that elected officials will not be getting phone calls or surprise emails just before the adoption. The same is true for adjacent communities. If they've been kept informed about the progress, then the review will be much smoother. All right, let's do a quick activity. This is going to be like making a little mini comprehensive plan for your community. First, I want you to think about an issue in your community. Then after you have that issue, think about what kinds of information would you need to learn more about that issue? Who might you need to talk to? Are there data sources available or maybe maps available to help describe that issue? Next up, you'd think about goals to resolve that issue, and then the objectives, what would you need to do to resolve that issue? And finally, what kind of action steps would be taken to resolve that issue? When you're ready, turn the video back on and compare your work to the example that I'm going to be providing. I know it won't be the same, but see if yours follows a similar train of thought. All right, welcome back. I hope you have your issue in hand. The issue that I've selected is looking at a community that needs to preserve farmland. And the information that I thought would be really helpful is locating active farms and then looking at soils maps to determine where the prime farmland soils are. And then I was thinking it might be good to follow that up with a few interviews with local farmers to find out where the really productive land is. All right, so as we move on to goals, the thought then is to think about, if the problem were resolved, what would be the result? So in my example, I have a goal as adopting zoning regulations that are intended to preserve valuable farmland while also recognizing the needs of the farming community. The objective would be that the township reviews these zoning options available to achieve that goal. And the policy would be that the township would meet with the farming community to determine the best methods to preserve farmland. Then the action would be that the township will adopt zoning regulation that preserves the largest tracts of prime farmland. So it was great spending time with you to learn about the planning steps and that we start off with planning to plan, right? There's so many steps in the process that it really is an efficient way to think through timelines and all these steps from beginning to end to have a well-run and timely process. We also learned about those five key phases of the planning process, starting off with, you know, working with the public, then collecting and analyzing data, setting goals, objectives, and policies, and then drafting the plan and adopting the plan. All of these steps really build on each other until that draft plan can be written. We touched on working with the public in this course. Join me in course five to take a deeper look at the tools and strategies available to engage the public in the planning process.
Any comments or questions from the commission?
I'll start off with a question for those who have been involved with the general plan process or as some of you have already, you know, seen with the housing element, what, if you think there's anything missing or that was super critical with what was presented?
Kathy, you look like you want to say something. You're muted.
They, they don't express the frustration with not having solutions to some of the problems. And how, like you can, sometimes it's, it's just really beyond, especially a small town, to accomplish the things they need. So we have to find the workarounds, or we have to go off to other larger agencies to get money. And I think that's one of the tragedies, tragedies and strategies for, for planning is having the resources to do the things that you're talking about. That really makes sense, but are so difficult to accomplish.
Yeah, they didn't really get into that aspect of it. You know, you come up with the plan, but then, yeah, how do you get the resources and everything to do the implementation of all the different pieces? You've just spent so much time working on.
Right, yeah, it wasn't included as one of the strategies or goals, right? Ways to really implement things.
But I think, you know, actually going through this work plan process, I think is very interesting and valuable to see that, you know, we, you know, Kathy, you and I were on the G-PAC and been involved in this process for a long time, and it's kind of nice to see that we are actually crossing some stuff off of the, the list, so to speak, you know, that, you know, not getting everything, but you know, we're making some progress. So I think that's nice to see through this work plan process. I mean, I think that, you know, again, having been on the general plan advisory committee, I feel like when we did the general plan update, you know, I think we incorporated, you know, most of what she was presenting, you know, we definitely had, you know, citizens, you know, as part of the G-PAC, but also, you know, those were all public meetings, and other people did come and speak and make comments. And so I think we did get a good amount of public input to that process. And then there was certainly, when it came to the planning commission, there was, you know, a lot of public hearings discussing, you know, in great detail, a lot of different, you know, elements of the general plan and kind of crafting it down. And it took a long time. That's one thing she didn't talk about, is how long it takes. So it took a long time to get through that process. But I think it's also interesting to think about, you know, as we talked about, you know, moving that northern area specific plan up our list a bit. I mean, that, you know, that kind of specific plan process would go through a very similar process, you know? Getting the data, having public meetings, figuring out who the stakeholders are, putting a budget together for, you know, figure out what consultants we need, and, you know, all that needs to happen, not only for the general plan, but all these more smaller, specific plans that we would, you know, put together as the planning commission.
Like, like the Ice Park Plan and the process we went through doing that, and now we're, you know, it basically sat there all that time. Now that got done, things did get improved over the years, and we knew what to improve. But now we're looking at doing it again, and, and then maybe moving forward with more of the things that we had hoped to accomplish.
Yeah.
It works.
Yeah, it can be slow, especially, as I said, a small community like ours without a lot of resources, it can be a very slow process.
Yeah, with one person in planning.
Yeah.
There's also the parks department, and the tree board and everything else.
Yeah.
We have more than one person, we got jobs.
Usually there are, there's a, yeah, get multiple departments. Yeah, get multiple departments.
Yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate that problem, yeah.
Any other thoughts from the commission? I see Rick has hung in with us and he has his hand up and not really a public comment item, but I'm happy to hear what he has to say if no one else has any objections.
Thank you. Thank you very much. What should I call you? Chair Paul?
Or just Paul?
Paul, I through the presentation, wondered if I should be even attending this meeting because I'm a registered alien, I'm a tenant, and I live out still in the nine, five, four, six, two area, but I live out on Fiori Lane, Hon Eve, you know, out to the to the west. So that was the first point and I, no answer is fine. I said I wasn't going to bug you, but I thought, well, what the heck? And the next thing is, is Sebastopol plugged into a United Nations program, which I think is going, where cities around the world send in the problems they're having, those are sent out to all the cities around the world again. And then anybody who has come up, any, any, any city who has come up with a clever idea, they they respond. And I'm no doubt they have updated their programs and things, but I can remember when it was a really quite amazing process. So thank you very much for listening.
Thanks for, thanks for attending, Rick.
And just to answer Rick's question, so, you know, this is the City of Sebastopol Planning Commission. So it deals mostly with, you know, things within the incorporated town. However, we welcome all comers to listen and to engage with us. So thank you for that.
Okay, then moving on, do we have any subcommittee updates to report? All right, seeing that, how about the planning director's report?
Sure, I always got something. Let's see, for those of you following the Hountley Square project, they did get their final design review board and tree permit removal last Wednesday. So they are now completely entitled and we'll start working with them at a staff level regarding their public improvements and coordination with the other, but they have new plans on that one. But happy to see that 2017 project come to fruition. So it's not just general plans and things like that that take a while. Sometimes larger projects do too. The Woodmark project, that's the SB 35 project the city has been reviewing. We did issue a determination on Friday that they are eligible to apply for SB 35. However, there were some inconsistencies with their project submittal. And so SB 35 doesn't allow us to sort of a completeness review. We just have to basically say it's inconsistent and list those items which you've done for them. And then they would need to reapply. And obviously, if they're doing the same thing, that we would anticipate a quicker turnaround the next time. The local hazard mitigation plan that the commission has been involved in, we did get notification that FEMA has granted preliminary approval to us. And actually, they said it was one of the better plans they'd ever seen. So very happy about that. The, I think we just waited long enough that we had pretty much every disaster already had sort of happened or almost brushed us. So I was saying, I made sure PSPSs were in the, and evacuations were in the RFP, but not pandemic response. But we managed to include it. Seriously, so that is, that's a big step. So that's, that has been reviewed by both Cal OES, which had a few comments. Our consultant made those corrections and now FEMA has also reviewed and approved that. The next step for that is that it does need to be adopted by council. And then we send it back to FEMA and we need to submit it within a year. Although obviously we want to fast track this. Not only does it ensure that once adopted and approved by FEMA with their final approval, that the city is eligible for any FEMA disaster funding. It also allows us to apply for mitigation grants for projects and efforts that are in the local hazard mitigation plan. And so there are a number of those, the Stormwater Projects and Flood Control Projects, which does include the Calder Creek Naturalization Project. The, and just a number of projects like the potential, you know, stable energy sources for the city's wells and other infrastructure. I won't go into further detail, but we do definitely want to make sure we get that to council as soon as we can. So that is on the June 7th calendar, the tentative calendar, but I submitted the report today. So it's ready to go for them. The city council meetings on June 21st and July 5th are anticipating to be pretty much just the budget and capital improvement plan. I have had a number of budget subcommittee meetings, both for the, the more recent one was the capital improvement plan. And they, I don't think they've made any changes to what the planning commission has already seen and approved. The parklet is not identified as coming from a park fund. And that is one of the items, as we noted, that they did want to flag and discuss with the full council as they reviewed the CIP. The planning department budget is more or less the same as last year. We are looking at expending more of our special planning grant funds, which are in a separate, separate bucket, not in our departmental budget. Those are the SB two and other state grants. We did just close two or three weeks ago, a, the RFP for objective design standards. We received one application or one response to that, but they are a very respected firm. John and I met with them last week and with some modifications, we're hoping to move forward with that. And that would be with the Design Guidelines Subcommittee, which includes Chair Fritz. And then the housing element work is also heavily underway. We're reviewing and vetting the various sites for the site inventory. And because HCD has some automatic assumptions and some of those are that a site smaller than a half acre, you need to show that there's actual genuine interest from developers in that. And so fortunately, I, I keep most, you know, random questions from people, emails from potential developers or purchasers asking about different sites. So we have plenty of documentation there for some of, some of the sites that are less than or not vacant because it's also our issue. So it does look like we will have plenty of sites for the next round without any rezoning. And so that's still work in progress, but we'll be presenting that back to the planning commission once, once completed. And I think, oh, and if you wanted to mark way ahead for city council, I believe the climate action framework that Phoebe Goldman is working on, she will be presenting that to the Climate Action Committee in June and to the planning commission, to the city council, likely the second meeting in July. So I think that's the 19th. Yes, that's the 19th. And there have been some other, oh, we do have actually the Sculpture Garden, second call for Ice Park Sculpture Garden closed today and we've received four additional applications. So the Public Guard Committee is going to be reviewing them next Wednesday. And on the council for approval on the June 7th as well, we're looking at installation June, early July and a opening celebration, so my calendar is July 23rd in the park. And I think that's, I think that's it for me. Most of your questions?
Any questions? I have one question, and I know we've talked about this a while back, and I just wonder if there's any news, any, do you know anything about the status of that project at the corner of Murphy and Healdsburg? That's been.
I do.
Under construction for a really long time and just. And nothing happened.
And in fact, our DRB, when we did a tour, requested that we update our construction ordinance to have timeline for construction. The, unfortunately, the, the owner of that passed away, so it has been with some trustees. But I, John and I actually met a couple of weeks ago with the new owner, who also owns the site next door, the vacant site, just to the east. We actually met with them about potential development of that site to the east for mixed use in front with a part, you know, retail with apartments over it and then townhouses on the back portion of the parcel off of Murphy Street. That actually may be coming to the commission for a preliminary review as it moves forward. So and that's another one we have for our housing sites list, since there's a definite interest there. The, they are trying to finish up the construction of that corner property. The single-family home is basically done, my understanding. It's some of the site work that had a retaining wall and a little bit of the parking area and then some work on the mixed, the mixed unit, which ended up being retail below. It'll just be a cold shell. So they'll look for a tenant to do the tenant improvements on that first floor. And then the upper floor, I believe it was approved with one apartment. And then they actually changed it during or just before construction to be two apartments, two smaller apartments, which was of course fine with the city, so with no exterior changes. So that is getting finished up. I would have to ask the building official what, what his estimation is on it for closer. But that's generally what's going on with it.
That's great. Let's appreciate that.
Oh, and we did also get a call from City Ventures. They kind of went dark on the sites behind O'Reilly during COVID. And the project leader had a baby as well. So, you know, a few things going on for them. They are looking to, they're doing some due diligence right now, but they are potentially going to pick that project back up. And that would probably be like later summer or fall when they do their sort of initial submittal work.
Thanks.
So lots of stuff.
Yeah. Anything else from anyone? All right. Thank you all. And we'll adjourn tonight's meeting and see you all. It's not going to be the 14th of June, my next meeting.
It will hold on. Let me check. And if you're going to hang on, Paul, afterwards, we can try to set a date for a chair meeting with you. That'd be great. It will be June 14th. Yes.
All right. Thanks everyone. Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Sorry, Josh, I know that's your thing, but I.
You, Charlie, would you like Sam and I to pop off?
It doesn't, it doesn't matter. I just wanted to make sure the YouTube stream was off despite I can't tell from here.
Assistant's live.
Yeah, have you done the, if you make me host, I can make sure it's stopped. I know how to do that, but I don't know how to tell you how to do that.
Am I host? No.
I am not host either. I think it's the other tech person. That's okay. I don't care who knows about my calendar. So Paul, are you available on either this Thursday, early afternoon or sometime next Tuesday?
I think next Tuesday, I think next Tuesday would be better. Free all day on Tuesday. What works for you?
About 10 AM.
That sounds good.
All right, cool. I will also need a Zoom link, I guess.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks. Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.